Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April twenty-second City Council meeting. If you'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, and then we'll remain standing for a moment of silence. A seat. We've got some proclamations this evening, got three of them. The first one is for National Drinking Water Week. Do we have some members of our utility department who want to wish, would like to come up? We have a proclamation, and I think we're all excited, getting excited about a new water plant that's going to be coming on board. And bet the bigger applause is for when we say "soft water." Are we still on, in line for, towards the end of August? Good, good to hear. So, I'll let you go ahead and introduce yourself real quick, Matt.
I'm Matt Beetz, Deputy Director of Public Works, and with us tonight is David Meadows, one of our chief plant operators.
And then, of course, Frank Haybard over there. He's hiding. So, whereas water is our most valuable natural resource, and whereas drinking water serves a vital role in daily, daily life, serving an essential purpose to health, hydration, and hygiene needs for the quality of life of our citizens, to our citizens enjoy. And whereas tap water delivers public health protection, fire protection, support for our economy, and the quality of life we enjoy. And whereas, we are all stewards of the water infrastructure upon which current and future generations depend. And whereas Bonner Springs is in the process of building a new water treatment plant, which will expand our treatment capacity from two million gallons per day to three million gallons per day. And whereas, the new treatment plant and filter will filter more minerals from the groundwater, eliminating the need for water softeners. And whereas, the hard work performed by the entire water sector, designing capital projects, operators ensuing, ensuring the safety and quality of drinking water, or a member of a pipe crew maintaining the infrastructure communities rely, relying on to transport high-quality drinking water from its source to consumers' taps. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, proclaim the week of May fifth through eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as Drinking Water Week in the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, and ask that residents join in recognizing Bonner Springs' public utility staff for their dedication to produce and deliver safe, clean drinking water to the citizens of Bonner Springs. Just a few more months to go, we're waiting for it. Now, this one here, if somebody else would like to take the camera from Ms. Brake. I had to, um... I had to ask another staff member to produce this proclamation because it wouldn't be fair to ask her to produce her own proclamation, so... So, would you like to say a few words? I didn't think so. I think most of you know Chris, uh, Chris Brake is our city clerk, municipal clerk, and she does a phenomenal job. So whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk, a time-honored and vital part of local government, government exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the professional municipal clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas, the office of the professional municipal clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at all, all levels. And whereas, professional municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas, the professional municipal clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas, professional municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the professional municipal clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas, it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the professional municipal clerk. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby recognize the week of May fifth through May eleventh, twenty twenty-four, as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in Bonner Springs, and extend appreciation to our professional municipal clerk, Christina Brake, and to all professional municipal clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Peace by any means. Arbor Day, everyone associated with Arbor Day, would like to come up? I'll tell you what, before we start, this is in National Arbor Day. Uh, would you like to say a few words, Justine, or the staff from the Bonner Beautiful Commission?
Oh, you all are so bad. It seems we are doing this a little late, since everything else is going into May, and this is going to be Arbor Day like on, you know, the twenty-fourth of this month, so we're a little late, I guess, in getting this all together. But we do appreciate, we are ecstatic that we are Tree City USA again. Um, it's been going on for a number of years, we're very, very, very proud of that. Um, it takes work. Uh, Justine does all the paperwork you could possibly imagine to send it in to the people that, that grant us this. And between the trees that we plant and the tree, number of trees that go down, we have to have more than the ones that went down. And there's a percentage in there. So, we appreciate everyone that helps us, we appreciate the watering of, of the trees that we have, because the canopy that Bonner has goes back a couple hundred years on some of those trees. And they're beautiful, and there's only one way to get them there, and that's to keep them going.
Did you want, did you introduce all your members there that are with you?
I did not, I'll let you know. Okay. We've got Justine, and Karen, and Betty, and the biggest troublemaker over here, Ted. Oh, Bob's over there. Thank you, Bob, I'm sorry. You, you were hiding behind, yeah.
And we'll read the proclamation, and then I will be rereading it again Friday, uh, at the celebration at the elementary school. Whereas in eighteen seventy-two, the Nebraska Board of Agricultural established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed when more than a million trees were planted in Nebraska. And whereas, Arbor Day is observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas, trees provide many benefits to our environment. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our topsoil, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas, trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, since nineteen eighty-six, the City of Bonner Springs has planted over two thousand trees along our streets, in our parks, in our cemetery, and on school grounds. And whereas, trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Tom Stevens, Mayor of the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas, do hereby proclaim April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four, as Arbor Day in the City of Bonner Springs, Kansas. And I urge all citizens to support efforts to protect our trees and to plant trees for present and future generations.
Okay, next up is citizens' concerns about items not on tonight's agenda. Is there anybody who wishes to speak? Please step forward, state your name, address, and if you could, we might have you sign that, sign-in sheet when you're done.
Already have signed it, hopefully that, that's working. First, I'd like to thank Mayor Stevens for this opportunity to address the council as a citizen of Bonner Springs in this open public meeting. My name's Jeff Harrington, I live at nine fourteen South One Hundred and Thirty-First Street in Bonner Springs, in Ward Four. It is my great wish, dear Lord, to first say thank you on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your many and abundant blessings, thank you for life itself, for the measure of health. We need to fulfill our callings for sustenance and for friendship. Thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work and for the honor of bearing appropriate responsibilities. Thank you, as well as for the freedom to embrace you or for the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so, from your boundless and gracious nature. In the scriptures of many religions, it is said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities since you have established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and issues of our times, a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people, a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, confidence in what is good and fitting, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement, personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set today before them. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved city of Bonner Springs. I pray for the safety of our police, fire department, emergency services, public works, and recreation department, workers, as well as all other workers here in the City of Bonner Springs. It is in your most blessed name I pray, amen. The difference between a wish and a prayer is faith. If you do not have faith, then prayer does not matter. But if you have faith, not having a prayer does matter, a lot. An invocation or prayer before a government meeting has been a tradition in America for more than two hundred years. On June twenty-eighth, seventeen eighty-seven, even Benjamin Franklin opened with a prayer at the Constitutional Convention. The examples of invocations before government meetings are almost endless. The United States Congress, the Kansas State House of Representatives and Senate, and the United, the Unified Government of Wyandotte County and Kansas City, Kansas, all opened their meetings with an invocation. An invocation does not violate any law and is not a violation of the Establishment Clause of the First Amendment of the United States Constitution. Meaning the government is not promoting or endorse, endorsing a religion or denomination through a prayer. In twenty thirteen, the City of Lancaster, Pennsylvania, went through a legal challenge. The Ninth Circuit Court of Appeal determined that prayers ending in the name of Jesus do not violate the Establishment Clause. Participants are free to pray according to their customs since the prayers are not to prophesize or make converts of people. Neither are said prayers an endorsement by a government body. This was reaffirmed again in twenty fourteen in the town of Greece versus Galloway, where the U.S. Supreme Court approved an opening prayer at town council meetings. Due to misinformation and a very few activists protesting invocations, on rare occasion, public invocations have been substituted with a moment of silence. It's in an attempt to exclude those with differing, differing religious views. Let's be more inclusive and invite all faiths to participate and share in bringing a public invocation before our city council meetings. God will not respond to silence when we are instructed by Him to ask according to His will. I will conclude with the words of the late President Ronald Reagan. Far more can be accomplished by simple prayers of good people than by all the statesmen and armies of the world. I ask that the city council make a motion to have a resolution placed on the next city council agenda to have an invocation and the United States Pledge of Allegiance set at the beginning of all official city council meetings in Bonner Springs. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Is there anyone else who wishes to address the council tonight? Seeing none, we will, we will move forward. Uh, the first item on the agenda is the Consent Agenda. Uh, includes the minutes of the April eighth, twenty twenty-four, City Council meeting, claims for city operations, and first quarter financial reports. Does staff wish to pull anything? Anybody from citizens wish to pull any item? Counsel? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
I make a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Woods and a second by Mr. Shannon. We will call, ask the city clerk to call the vote.
Reeves?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Banks?
Yes.
McManahan?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Curley?
Yes.
Hip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes?
Okay, on to new business. The first item is a presentation by the Wyandotte County Health Department. Who would like to come up and speak?
Hi, good evening, hi, I'm Dr. Caldwell, I am the head director for, uh, the Unified Government for Wyandotte. I think when I took office, one of the things I said to myself was that, uh, we need to approach public health in a collective, uh, uh, um, service. So that sends my idea, or the Health Department idea, is that, uh, we need to provide services beyond, uh, KCK or just, or, or, or Wyandotte. So we decided that it is important for us to reach Bonner Springs and Edwardsville. Uh, so today we come to you with very humble spirit, uh, to say thank you for your patience with the Health Department. Uh, I think it's time for us now to come together, uh, and look forward to the future together. Uh, and my team is going to be explaining to you a little bit more as to what services we intend to provide, uh, for the City of Bonner Springs.
My name is Betty Chris, some of you guys know me as Betty Davis, I'm a former resident of Bonner, nineteen eighty-three graduate of Bonner. And, uh, I know Tom quite well, his wife is, uh, my sister. Not by birth, but we became sisters. I am the nurse supervisor at the Wyandotte County Health Department. And Terry and I, Terry is, uh, my direct supervisor, she's the deputy director. And we just kinda thought about the services that we could do here in Bonner. And so since I knew Tom, I decided I'd come and approach him and see what we could offer, because I knew there was a need here in Bonner for some of our services. So, once I spoke with Tom and got everything, I'm sorry, the mayor.
Uh, you call me Tom.
Let me be correct. After I got everything, uh, organized, and I came out and, and I proposed to him what we wanted to do. So what we're doing is, we started a satellite health clinic. And so what that entails is limited primary care, which is just basic primary care. We're also going to do women's care, meaning that the women could have a breast exam, they could have pap smears, uh, because we do have an exam table that was delivered out here as well. Uh, we're also going to do, start, uh, teenagers on birth control, or even women that qualify for birth control. Uh, family planning services go up to the age of, what, whenever. Yeah, menopause. So we give birth control up until probably fifty, sometimes we go as high as fifty years old, until the woman goes into menopause. So we're going to offer those services. We're also, uh, they have access to early detection works, because we do have an early detection work, uh, advocate with us, and she'll sign the, the, uh, client up if they meet the income guidelines. Our services, we do, uh, uh, provide for those that are uninsured, self-paid, they go on a sliding scale. We do take some insurances as well. Everyone is welcome, I know I'm leaving out a whole lot of things, but I'm quite nervous. I'm not a public speaker, so please forgive me. Uh, it's located in the Sunflower Room, every other Thursday from nine thirty a.m. to, I mean, from nine a.m. to eleven thirty a.m. So if you'd like to come through, take a visit, you could, uh, we just have it set up just like a clinic. I have, uh, three nurses there, well, two nurses, including myself. We have laboratory services there, we have two nurse practitioners that are there with me. Every other Thursday, we have a couple of secretaries as well. So anyone is welcome to come down, if you have an issue, if you have a minor cough, if you have a minor cut, you have anything that you need the nurse practitioner to see, you can come down, visit us, and we'll be more than glad to, uh, take care of you. If we can't help you, we'll make sure we will give you information where you can get some help. Uh, hopefully, in the future, we hope to grow this, but right now, we're just doing these limited, basic care items, uh, that I mentioned, and I'm sure that I'm missing a few because of my nerves, so please forgive me.
One of the main things is, um, this is a pilot, um, or we're considering it a pilot, uh, because we're wanting, um, to be able to advertise it and make sure we get a lot of, uh, participation in it. We're also doing, uh, surveys, because this is the menu of items that we know we can provide. We don't know what's needed. And so that's, we're going to do a, a client satisfaction at the end of their visit to say, what else? What, what can we offer, what, you know, what is needed out here? Um, because we keep hearing, you know, we need, uh, health services out west. And so we're trying to accommodate that. Uh, as Eli said, he wants to be, uh, community responsive, and so this is a way for us to do that. And so, um, as Betty said, we, we currently are able to do, um, some lab work. We're working on a CLIA wave certificate specific for the satellite clinic, um, that, that we can expand some of those. But we, it, it really is, we want the feedback, we want folks to come and visit, and then we want the feedback on what they perceive as the needs, uh, that we might be missing with the services that we're currently offering up. Um, so, uh, it's every other, we, our very first clinic was last Thursday, on the eighteenth. Um, it was kind of a bad day to start. Uh, it was pretty stormy and gray and cloudy and cold, and so we didn't get a lot of takers on our services. But, um, any ways that, that you all think is, uh, a good way for us to, uh, promote the clinic as well? Please let us know, we, we, uh, we work with, um, some of you may know, uh, Aleah Jarrett. Uh, she works at the Health Department as well, and she also does the food pantry at, uh, the church. And, uh, so we did some flyers, uh, through that process as well. So whatever there's a way of promoting it, let us know, we would like to do that. Um, we definitely want good participation, we want good feedback so that we know uh, what we're providing is the best thing to provide to the citizens of Bonner Springs. Any questions?
Yes. Anybody have any questions? Go for it, Mr. Reeves.
Yeah, um, you're lo, are you located on the first floor of the community center?
At the Sunflower Room on the, the, I guess that's the ground level.
Senior Center.
Okay. Yeah, across the, across the hallway from the senior center.
Yes, yes. I mean, and we have, uh, our supplies there, uh, Bonner Springs has been so gracious to let us store things there so that we don't have to bring it back and forth. The only thing that I bring every other week is the medication, of course, I can't leave it here, because we do have medication on site. We don't have any, uh, Schedule Two narcotics or anything such as that, just birth control and antibiotics.
Are, are you in connection with those here that would be able to put your information on the community bulletin board, on what, signs and so forth?
I did send a flyer to, uh, can't think of her name. Yes, and she posted it on the Bonner Springs website, and, yes.
Good. Thank you very much.
Thank you guys for having us, we really appreciate it.
Anybody else have anything, go for it.
It's nice to see you again, it's been many, many years, huh? Um, and thank you for coming. Um, is there any cost to the, uh, families or the participants that, uh, that come to see you?
Everything we do, except for the limited primary care, is on a sliding scale fee.
Okay.
So, I mean, those services, in the sliding scale fee, those services can be billed. The limited primary care is a flat fee. We do, uh, work physicals, which are seventy-five dollars, and we do sports physicals for children, uh, up to twelve years old, I believe, no, it's above, twelve years old is the starting point and up, is, uh, forty-five dollars. And then for the simple primary care stuff, is forty-five dollars. And those items are cash only because we don't have the ability to, to, uh, charge the insurance as of yet. Uh, the, the billing department is still working on that.
Okay, um, when you mentioned the flyers, I thought that was, that was really a great idea. Um, and you said you sent the flyer through Megan. Good, because, um, if there's any way that any of us can get flyers out through churches, through, uh, people we know, we have your permission to go ahead and do that with the flyer that you...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, because there's, um, or, there's a couple of us that are working through with people at Von Dale, as well as the Edwardsville High Rise and stuff, and it, I'd love for them to become aware of, of these opportunities and stuff, so...
Right, and we, I mean, and we want to get as many women as possible, you know, because as women, we don't take care of ourselves. And we take care of our family and not ourselves, and so, you know, breast cancer is on the rise, you know, you have your cervical cancer, you have your, you know, ovarian cancers, you know, some of those things could be prevented, you know, and we have two skilled nurse practitioners, uh, that can take care of those things, you know. If there is a problem identified during the pap smear, we have the ability to have that patient come down to the Health Department, because now we do colposcopies. We have one of our, uh, nurse practitioners do that, and that's just a more invasive cancer screening tool. So, it can help save lives in the long run.
Well, thank you for being here, you're, you're very much needed in our community, and we're glad you're here.
And as I said, we're working on the CLIA, um, CLIA wave testing, where we can do hemoglobin A1Cs, cholesterol screenings, um, blood pressure screenings, so we're, those are some of the, the items that will be forthcoming. So we're, those are some of the items that will be forthcoming.
If we wanna print it flyers, I work with a community-based organization here in Bonner, Edwardsville, and would like to distribute some flyers. Do you guys already have printed flyers we could get our hands on, or are those things we have to print ourselves?
Let me go ahead and answer that real quick, because I know Roger answered, asked the same question.
Oh, he asked if there was an electronic. I'm asking for just already printed.
If you, if you reach out to either Chris or Megan.
Okay.
That's what I did, is I reached out to Chris, and she was able to print off copies of both the English and Spanish. And I took a group of them to, by Von Dale, by Von Trent, I mean.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And do those include the list of services that are available, or no?
Yes.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Hi, Betty, how you doing?
I'm good, and you so?
You're Bonner Springs graduate, eighty-three, we're probably about the same age.
Yeah.
Given all the services that you say you provide, if there's any minors involved, is there parents that have to approve? Is there any?
Not for family.
Any clauses in that?
Not for family planning services? Go ahead, Terry, explain that.
There is an exemption for any family planning or STI services. They can request those to be confidential, and don't need to have parental be here.
For minors?
Yeah. If we do immunizations, or we do any primary care, then yes, we have to have a parent present to sign consent. But they can make the decisions for themselves of their sexual and reproductive health.
There's no liabilities?
It's covered under statute.
And someone did ask me about whether we were being protested, whether we did abortion. We don't do, we don't give abortion medication, we don't do abortion counseling, we don't have anything to do with anything that Planned Parenthood. If a patient comes in and they're pregnant, you know, hey, go see your doctor, you know, go.
Get in prenatal care as soon as possible.
Yes, yes. So you don't have to worry about any of that, because someone did call and ask if we were at risk of being picketing, or boycotted, or I forgot how it was.
Public health is looking more to preventative. We prefer to prevent as opposed to.
Right, clinical intervention. So we prefer that you don't get sick in the first place, then get sick and then go to the hospital, and then we have a few out of there, so we are more on a preventative side of public health.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for being here and the work that you're doing. We are so happy to have you. I think access to health care is so critical and not widespread in our country. So to see that coming to our community, that I know a lot of people will be able to benefit from, because of the rising cost of health care, even if you have insurance, it still isn't affordable. I know there's flyers, what else are you doing to advertise?
I believe, did you not get it on the website?
Yes, you did.
Okay, it's also publicized on the Unified Government Public Health Department website. We publicize it there. And we also have yard signs that indicate, you brought those, didn't you?
We don't have, it's not an official yard sign. We do have like the clipboard and an arrow pointing that we made our own satellite clinic sign. And of course, we couldn't put it outside last Thursday, because it was raining.
And blowing.
Yeah.
But we have a big clip thing with a poster board.
And a lot of word of mouth, you know, we're telling people about it whenever anyone calls. And they, you know, and I noticed that, because, you know, they have to give us their address. If they live out in this area, I do mention, hey, you know, we have a health clinic out here now. Maybe you would like to come down there. We can't do everything here, but we could always refer them back to our clinic. And we do provide, to our clinic, we do provide transportation if they're coming to a doctor's appointment. So, and it's free transportation if they have to come into Kansas City, Kansas.
Well, thank you again for the work you're doing. I wanna give you my phone number. If you would call me, because I would like to partner on getting the word out there. This is something that I don't want to disappear because of lack of involvement. I know many of us are involved in a lot of local boards and organizations. So I would love to make it to where you guys are busy those first and third Thursdays.
We would love to be busy.
And we, to be frank, don't get a lot of UG services that are willing to partner with us. So when Mr. Mayor, a few weeks ago, announced it, and then it happened so quickly, it was really exciting. So thank you for the very, very important work that you do for our communities.
Thank you.
Is care limited to Wyandotte County residents?
I'm sorry?
Wyandotte County residents only?
No. All the family planning and the primary care can be anyone. The maternal and child health, the prenatal care, which we're not providing at this time out here, would be, it would have to be limited to Wyandotte County.
Okay, thank you.
Because each county gets their own.
But I wanna put something into that as well. If they need a voucher for radiology services, they must be a Wyandotte County resident, because it is Wyandotte Foundation vouchers. That would be the only kicker.
No other questions? Seeing none, let me say this, I wanna, first of all, thank you very much. And I wanna thank our staff as well, the members who are involved in it. Because from the moment you reached out to me, to the time that first clinic was all, what, about three weeks? So I really wanna give you my appreciation for the expeditious manner in which it was handled. And hopefully, we'll get the word out, we'll get more and more people. And as I think several have asked already, Chris and Megan have electronic version of that. They can print off flyers. If you know a location in town where you believe it can reach some of the individuals who they might be able to offer their services to, please get some of those flyers and distribute them. We can be some of the biggest advocates up here, so. If there's no other questions, thank you very much.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you, everyone.
Onto item number two, Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee, twenty twenty-four funding recommendations.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tilly LaPlante, Finance Director and Staff Liaison for the Drug and Alcohol Committee. Our Drug and Alcohol Committee met and reviewed applications for funding for twenty twenty-four. We received three applications, Clark Middle School At-Risk Program, Project Graduation, and Paces. And we're recommending funding all three of those programs at what they requested. The total funding is thirteen thousand dollars. There is fifty thousand budgeted for programs this year. So if something come up, came up later in the year, that is available to come forward to the council. This fund also provides twenty-five percent of the school resource officers' salary and benefits. The other seventy-five percent comes from the school district. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Does staff have anything else to add? Would any of our citizens like to speak on this matter at all? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve funding in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars for substance abuse programs as recommended by the Drug and Alcohol Advisory Committee.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. Reeves and a second by Mr. Shannon. And we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
I have nothing to add.
Ms. Long?
No, I have nothing to add, thank you.
No questions, thanks for the work you do on the committee.
We're down to how many school resource officers at the moment?
We've always just had one, I believe.
Didn't have more than one?
No.
One covers all three schools? High school.
High school mainly, he may do some work at the middle school, I'm not sure.
We also have, an SRO is provided through the Sheriff's Department that I believe predominantly goes, well, does the elementary schools, because there's three elementary schools in three locations. So there is that resource available as well.
I thought it was one.
Wait a second.
I was gonna say, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Reeves, your friend.
Okay, I like the fact that it's not just a single presentation to kids, don't drink, don't do drugs, but you're following up and you're doing the minor things too underneath the whole thing. You're creating a very good program. So, yeah.
Nothing?
Nothing. Tilly, thank you. I know you've been doing this for a long, long time. And it's, it's been run so well because of you being a part of it and working with everybody, and I can't say enough good about it, and enough good about what you've done and everything. Thank you. So that's the thing now, you can't quit.
Thank you very much, Tilly, and the committee itself, for taking the time and looking through these applications and finding a way to distribute this fund. So if there's no other questions from the council, I'll go ahead and ask the clerk to record the vote.
Gurley?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Tilly. Onto item number three, sale of a two thousand five EBRONTO Skylift aerial truck to Leavenworth County Fire District Number Two.
Mayor and Council, Tim Richards, Fire Chief, just as the mayor just mentioned, I'm just before the council to request that you consider the sale of the two thousand five older aerial that we're getting rid of to Leavenworth County Fire District Number Two. And in discussion with some vendors and individuals in the used fire truck business, both the people I reached out to said that seemed like an appropriate amount of money for them to offer. And I'd stand for any questions.
Any of the staff input at all? Any of the citizens like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to approve the sale of the two thousand and five EBRONTO Skylift aerial truck to Leavenworth County Fire District Two for the amount of seventy thousand dollars.
I'll second.
We have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Ms. Blanks. We'll go ahead and start down on that end with you, Mr. Shannon.
Nothing actually, but Chief, thanks for all you do. Be sure and pass that on to all the guys on the department.
Mr. McMahon?
No questions.
No questions, thank you.
No questions.
I'll just ask one real quick. I assume the sale is contingent on the arrival of the new one, right?
Yes, and the new one is in Alatha at Conrad's. I went and saw it on Thursday. And it looks good. And as soon as we get it here and get our training done on it, we'll for sure, I'll work with Sean to make sure, a good timing to bring it up to a council meeting.
Great, thank you. If there's no other questions, I would ask the clerk to call the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Onto item number four, thank you, Chief. Onto item number four, we have a bid award for ultraviolet disinfection equipment.
I know, I get all the great stuff, don't I? Frank Abart, Public Works Director. This is one of many pieces of equipment and components associated with the wastewater treatment plant. And as you probably have noticed over the last several years, we try to replace one or more of those components every year. It's a really corrosive environment down there. And it's an industrial plant, the stuff, some of the stuff is welded upon welded upon welded down there to keep it running, so. And of course, it's not easily acquired, some of this equipment. The case in point, as I was talking to the city manager this morning, the second aerator that we ordered in January of twenty-three just arrived in the last seven days or so. So we can start installing, I mean, yeah, this stuff is, it's unique equipment. But anyway, tonight I'm before you to request replacement of our ultraviolet disinfection equipment at the wastewater treatment plant. And essentially, what this does is the final treatment of the wastewater before it heads out to be discharged into the Kansas River. I failed to bring a picture, I needed to bring a picture of it, but this is in a building all by itself, because it's not something you wanna really get exposed to. Maybe the best way to describe this is like a great big tanning bed. Only you don't wanna ever stick your hand in there or anything. But it gives some intense ultraviolet rays, and it takes care of the bad stuff that might be left in the water before it's discharged into the river. It's gonna cost two hundred and three thousand dollars, and we have two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars in the approved budget for this year. We're gonna need another ten to fifteen thousand dollars to go ahead and remove the old and install the new. So we're still within budget, so we feel pretty comfortable with this. Beyond that, I stand for any questions you may have.
Any additional from the staff? Would the citizens like to address this matter at all, speak on it? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the bid from Eolia Water Technologies Treatment Solutions for the replacement of UV disinfection equipment for the wastewater treatment plant in the amount of two hundred and three thousand dollars.
Second.
We have a motion by Mrs. Gurley, sorry about that, and a second by Mr. Shannon. And we'll go ahead and start here with you, Mr. Mac Mahan.
I have no questions.
Ms. Woods?
I appreciate the complete wow, I learned a lot about water treatment.
What is your guesstimate at a delivery date of this equipment?
I think they were talking at least twenty to thirty weeks, but you don't know until you call them and you order it. Nothing.
Ms. Blanks?
No questions, thanks, Frank.
Ms. Long? Reeves?
Down here. One quick question, does that water get, is it circulated through this? Or is it doing the process while it's being discharged?
Yes, the water will go, I'm gonna use this desk as an example, but I mean, the water will come in one end, and then it's treated by several components of this UV. By the time it comes out the other end, then it's, it definitely exceeds all the water quality requirements. It's better water going into that river than what's in the river.
But it doesn't circulate around multiple times?
No, not in this particular process, no. There is circulation in other parts of the plant, but not, this is the final piece, the final leg of that.
And then for the replacement and the, for the removal and the installation, you said an additional, is that beyond the?
That's beyond the cost of the equipment. This is just the equipment.
No, no, but the budget was two twenty-five, so that's why.
Right, so we should be fine.
I didn't know if you were talking about that on top of that difference, so.
Okay, great. Good clarification, sorry.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'd ask the clerk to call the vote.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much. Anytime you want a tour of that facility, I'd be glad to get it.
I've been there, I need another tour.
Once is enough.
We got a few council members that haven't seen it yet. Onto item number five, bidding the war for the twenty twenty-four street resurfacing project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, Matt Beats, Deputy Director of Public Works. Tonight, we're asking for you to approve the twenty twenty-four street resurfacing project. On the eleventh of April, city clerk's office opened up six bids. The apparent low at the time was Phillips paving construction. We've never actually had, we've had them bid on projects, they've just never actually won one, or been the lowest bidder on it. So we did call and contact the references, and they had pretty good reviews. So we see no concerns with them. So we're recommending that they be awarded this project for this year. I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
Any additional input from staff?
Matt, can you just go through the list of streets for everybody's benefit?
Absolutely. This would be the final of the three parts of Hundred Eighteenth and Hundred Twenty-first over by the Boy Scout Camp. This would be the lower part of that. It will all. It will also resurface Schwartz and 132nd Street out in Lay Valley. The third one is, I'm sorry, not Lay Valley, Deerfield. Excuse me. The third one is 138th Street from Metro to Kansas Avenue. And then the final piece is all of Lay Valley. So, all the streets out in the Lay Valley subdivision would be resurfaced. I don't have the list of all, so.
Anything else from staff?
Just the only thing I want to mention is, this is just one of a couple of different street projects that are going to be going on this year. We also have the C Clip project that will take on, oh, K-32, Camp Gibbs, wherever you're at, from Nettleton to 142nd Street. So, that'll be, that's a state project or involved project. And then also, we, we hope to have 138th Street first phase coming up from, from Camp to Morris bid out later on this, this spring, I believe it's July?
June.
June. Yep. So, again, a lot going on in the construction world, but this is the city's, by and large, the city portion of our typical street work that we do annually.
Thank you. Any of the citizens would like to comment on this item at all? Right up here, uh, going to have to give up your spot there, Matt. Name and address.
I live at 13938 Gibbs Road, which is just down the highway from 138th Street. And I guess my question is, you say you're going to work on 138th from Camp to Morris, correct? Okay, yeah. So, are, will that address that huge gully that's along there with no shoulders between the high school and?
Yes.
Because that is, that's a dangerous place to, dear.
Now, that's not included with this, what we're talking about right here. That project will be going out to bid. That's what City Manager was talking about, is going to go out for bid in June or July. And then that will probably start, will it start this fall or?
Optimistically, maybe, like October.
And then you could speak a little bit to that project because it's going to be a complete street.
Yeah, it would be new sidewalks.
And the ditch will be gone.
Underground, storm drains.
And so then we'll have a party when that's done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the bid for the 2024 street resurfacing project to Phillips Paving in the amount of $771,069.66.
Second.
So, we have a motion by Mr. Shannon and a second by Mr. Mac Mahan. We'll start here with you, Ms. Blanks.
Yes. Oh, questions? Sorry.
Yes, any questions?
No, no questions.
Ms. Long? Ms. Reeves?
Metropolitan, the street, you've mentioned that as one of the streets, right?
138th Street starts at Metro to Kansas. There isn't work on Metro this year.
No work on Metropolitan.
Correct.
Mr. Mac Mahan?
So, the cemetery. I, the road that's gravel, that kind of runs parallel, it's by the church. That's, that's part of the cemetery, right? Is that, is, that's like Old Nettleton or something that kind of curves around?
Metropolitan, yeah, I believe so.
I don't know if we have any asphalt left over, right? Or if we can figure something out. It'd be nice to spruce that up, and the cemetery just in general needs a little, right? That's something we ought to be proud of, right? Sitting with Rosa now, and just kind of drawing my attention to the cemetery, and then we, because we have special events up there. We have funerals and stuff, and I think Bonner should, should be proud of what we have and keeping it up, right? And I might be diving into something here, but I just, just want to highlight that as well. So, if there's something we can do to make it all blacktop out the cemetery, that'd be great. At least the traveled areas, not necessarily out by the water tower. Thanks, Matt.
Yeah.
Thanks for all that you do.
Ms. Woods?
No. No questions.
Does this include striping?
On 138th Street, yes. We'll replace the striping that's out there. Nothing looks great. Thanks, Matt. Nothing.
When it comes to 138th from Metropolitan up to Kansas Avenue, I assume there will be at times some closures there. At what point in time are you, where are you going to put these signs to redirect traffic? Hopefully, you'll do them at Morris and not wait till Metropolitan.
There will be construction ahead signs along it. However, the road will, will be closed however it is technically still open. They'll flag around their work when they're out and working on it. It's similar to what we do to any other street programs themselves. The road itself won't be closed. We may have like contractors on each end of it, let's say at Metro and at Kansas, suggesting they go the other direction, but.
Yeah, because traffic wise, it'd be better to have that load of traffic on Morris than it would be on Metropolitan.
Right.
Very thin, narrow roads, strip of land, so. There's no other questions, comments? I will call, ask the clerk to record the vote.
Blanks?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Kip?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Appreciate it. Onto our last item, bidding of the word for Lyons Park concessions.
Good morning, Mayor and Council members. I guess evening technically.
It could be a long evening.
Nathan Brumgarth, Recreation Coordinator. I'm here to ask Council to make a motion to approve a bid for the Bonner Springs Girls Wrestling for the operation of the Lyons Park concession stand in the amount of $200. We had eight parties request, the RFP requests for proposal for this, only one submitted a bid. Many of the interested parties had questions regarding our insurance requirements that we have for all contractors, health inspections, and the equipment in the facility, and ultimately, that led to a few not pursuing this. We're not expecting a major increase in our utilities such as water, electricity. As when the restrooms open in this building, the air conditioning's running, water's going through. The facility was not open in 2023. As the concessions vendors struggled to justify the operational costs, based on community feedback, we have determined that the community expects this concession stand to be open. Hence why we put out that request for proposal. I would entertain any questions.
Any additional input from staff? Is there anybody from the citizens who'd like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the bid from the Bonner Springs Girls Wrestling for the operation of the Lyons Park concession stands in the amount of $200.
Second.
A motion by Ms. Wood and a second by Mr. Reeves. We'll start, we'll go ahead and start down there with you, Mr. Reeves.
We're not going to be in trouble with child labor laws or anything on this.
We are not. This is another company coming in and operating it, so if they break the law, they're responsible. We're not doing that. It's also with the Girls Wrestling Club here at Bonner Springs High School. So, they're doing it more as a fundraising opportunity.
I couldn't hear you then.
Oh, we will not be breaking, we will not be held liable for any laws that are broken by the contractor at the concession stand. It'll be run by the Girls Wrestling Team at Bonner Springs High School. So, they're.
Their sponsors?
Yes, their parents. There's a group of parents that are working together that submitted this application. They're using it as a fundraising technique.
Sounds like a wonderful idea.
Do they provide the items sold and then just keep a percentage of it?
So, they provide the items sold and they keep all of the profit.
Oh, okay.
So, we are just getting the $200. That was a fair amount based on our last concessions bid, which included the pool, which was $1,200 here.
Okay, great.
Mr. McMahon?
The more the better. Not having a concession stand kind of makes things rough, right? And, uh, and that looks, this is a good thing for Bonner, especially when you got parents coming maybe from Johnson County or whatever, and they're participating in sports activities here, so. Glad you guys did that. Thanks for doing it.
Thank you.
Is this schedule, is it about the same as what it was the last time the concession stand was open? Or is it an increase or a decrease in the availability?
It is the same. We ask that they be open for all of our games and all high school games. Some of those high school games have already started, so obviously, they won't be open for that. But if this motion approv, gets approved, I plan on giving them the keys once they give us the insurance, and they should be open mid-May.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thanks for all you do and everything. The, will they, the people that are going to run it, are they in, on any kind of a buying plan? Or are they going through you?
They are purchasing all of their materi, materials independently. I do not know.
So, we're, we're just, it's the 200 and we've stepped back.
We're essentially just providing the space for them to operate the concession stand.
Great. Thank you.
Yes.
Are we responsible for any maintenance or repairs to equipment within the concession stand throughout?
Not to equipment, but any structural repairs, such as like the roof, electrical, that type of stuff.
So, they will have, are they bringing in equipment or does it already exist there?
There is equipment already in place. There's a couple freezers, a popcorn machine, and a snow cone machine, which are city property. They're going to have to bring in a other cooler or refrigerator for their cool items.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Appreciate it, Mr. Brumgarth. Looking forward to having a few treats there at the, at the ball games, so. If there's no other questions, I will have the clerk call the vote.
Kip?
Yes.
Shannon?
Yes.
Long?
Yes.
Gurley?
Yes.
Reeves?
Yes.
Wood?
Yes.
Mac Mahan?
Yes.
Blanks?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Ms. Brumgarth. Appreciate it. That brings us to, closes our regular business. Along to reports now. So, we'll start with the City Manager's report.
I can't recall if I brought this up at our last meeting or not, but it bears repeating if I did. The farmer's market is underway, so the bollards are actually being placed, or footings are being placed, rather, to install the structure, so you can kind of get a visualization of the size of that. We are looking forward to hopefully getting the rest, well, the full structure later on this month, early part of May. But that will not stop the farmer's market from returning, which will happen on, on May 4th for their kickoff event. I do also want to point out, if it hasn't already become known by some, we do have some new signs going in. They are bright, and these have Tom's name on them, some of them, but the.
Will you change that?
What's that? Yeah. The, again, that's, uh, that's, um, a great project for our gateways in the city and something we've been working towards for a couple of years now. And there's more to come with, with the, uh, the signs. And then I do want to mention, as brought up a few council meetings ago, there are some additional wayfinding signs going in throughout the community as well. Those are getting installed as well. And then lastly, in the spirit of Arbor Day and knowing Bonner Beautiful's in the crowd as well, I do want to just acknowledge and remind folks that we do have the residential street tree program available to the community. So, this is in partnership with the Kansas Forest Service, where we are actually offering free trees to folks to install in their yards, or in the right of way, rather. There is a link in the City Manager Report for anybody that might be interested in, in getting a, a tree planted in their yard. That is all I have this evening.
And we'll go ahead and start with council items. We'll start down here with Mr. Shannon.
Sean, are the, the trees, do you know what kind they are, or is that, I haven't even looked at this site yet? And are they, will they be planted in people's yard, in the yard itself, or in the right of way?
Trees will be planted in the right of way, and the species of tree is heavily decided by the Kansas Forestry Department. They're going to basically look at the area that is proposed and recommend a type of tree. But the citizens also get a preference type, whether they want a flowering tree, a fruiting tree, non-fruiting tree, all those, those types of things. But the forester will give his main recommendation from there.
Okay. And there's no cost to the applicant if they're approved and stuff? It's, they plant it themselves, or?
City staff plants them, and city staff will maintain them for two years, and then it's up to the owner. But there's no cost other than that to the citizen themselves. This is all grant funded.
Great. Thank you.
Mr. Kip?
The former mayor put the prayer out there. Is that automatically added to the agenda, or do we need to request that to be added?
We'll do is we'll give it to staff. Staff can, will review it. They, depending on the resolution, they may have to have the attorney review it and make sure there's no issues with it, and then it can be brought forward.
So, once it's presented, it's going through the process? Okay, thanks. Also, Riverview, this has just gotten ridiculous with this person that emailed, I think he copied everybody, I'm not sure. There's a city manager and city clerk on there, but do we have any ability to apply pressure to these people? This is just, I mean, it's been two years. Yeah. The city engineer has been working with the developer to find a solution to that, that particular area. This is a low spot along that roadway, so I know there's been, um, active conversations and some solutions presented to, to correct the, the area and the issue. I'll, will say that this was part of the agreement that we had for the IRB for the tax abatement, was that the roadway needed to be complete and accepted by the city council by April, the end of April. This is our last council meeting in April. So, there is the, there is a clawback in their, their incentives that will, unless you all approve differently at a later point in time, I'll, I'll say, they are getting dinged for not having this complete by the end of the, end of the month. So, that was put in there to try to prevent, you know, sort of these continued issues. Obviously, that's, that did not work. But I can say that, again, the city engineer and the Community Development Director have both been discussing the issue with the developer and their engineering folks to try to get a, a solution out there as quickly as possible.
Okay, thanks.
Anything else? Mr. Kip? Okay, Ms. Gurley?
Is there any update or any information you can share on the former Dairy Dine? I've had a couple of people ask what the status is on that.
I, I don't have any, any update. I thought about that just the other day as well, so.
People got real excited, and then it just kind of dropped off the map, so.
Last I talked to Dustin, they were doing MEP phase, and they were having challenging with subgrade plumbing. But I have not had an update past then.
Thank you. That's all for me. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Wood?
I want to make sure that the nondenominational prayer before the city council meeting gets brought up because I think it makes a big, a huge difference to everything, and I agreed with what everything he said. And I want that to happen at the next meeting.
City? Mr. Mac Mahan?
Some, uh, dandelions. Jeez, old peaks. I want to spray all the neighbors dandelions and stuff, and I, I, it seems like this has been brought up before, anyway. Let's just have to get that off my chest. They're going to go away eventually. It's just additional upkeep for me and my yard. I am being so self-absorbed at the moment. Yeah, that's, it's good stuff. Jeff, thank you for that presentation. I, I met today with the ministerial fellowship, used to be alliance, but now it's fellowship. And they're doing some really good things, so some shut-ins. We're going to have opportunities for people in our community to volunteer time to go and, and do stuff at their house to clean up. And on May 18th, we're going to remove a, an old deck that needs to be taken down because it's a safety issue at the moment, and then there's some undergrowth, there's some trees, small trees, it wasn't trees, but they are now, and, and these are the kind of, this is kind, a lot of the neat things that Bonner does that, so, that we need just to be aware of and stuff. And I think they're working on, uh, this ministerial fellowship is kind of trying to do their best. I know they're working with Officer Pate to, to get the word out, to get sign-ups and people to volunteer and participate in, for a good cause in our community, not just here in Bonner, but in Edwardsville as well, too. So, kudos to those guys.
Blanks?
I want to invite everyone to the Chamber Luncheon May 2nd at 11:30 at Lake of the Forest. We will be honoring our NHS students. We will be honoring our NHS students and then outgoing superintendent Dan Brungardt will be speaking. So if anybody can make it, please reach out to me. I'll get you signed up for that. And then if anybody does want to cover any students lunches, lunches, those are welcomed as well.
Thank you, Shaun, for bringing up the farmer's market. We are really excited that the grand opening will be on five-four this year, but when the pavilion is open, we will have a giant celebration. So thank you, Justine, and everyone that's been involved in getting that thing here. We are really excited about that and hope that it brings more growth for the farmer's market. But in the meantime, before the pavilion is open, I hope you all will frequent the farmer's market as often as possible, because we always need customers or else we don't have vendors, so we need that to keep happening. Also, this year, we will be partnering with Bonner Integrative Health and a yoga pad for community programming and community yoga. They have graciously allowed some of their best instructors to do community yoga for us this year. And we are partnering with other organizations as well to do some community outreach and some community programming, so stay on the lookout for those things. Thank you.
Long? Mr. Reeves?
Yes, I was prepared to make a motion about continuing with the vocal prayer at the beginning of our meetings, but that's, looks like we're going to be talking about that in the future, so I'm all on board with that. One other item, in the past, I've been informed and also have noticed that some of our trees, especially ones down on Second Street, the other side of the police station, are lacking water and was wondering if this year we could make sure that that water, watering those trees is taken care of in a proper manner. It seems like in the past, those viewing that that have some knowledge about how much water trees need seem to believe that not enough watering is going on. And so I'm, maybe we need to educate, re-educate our staff that does that so that the proper amount of water is getting to those trees. Not only those, but I know there's some in front of our building here that needs some. And I know that, or at least I thought that some of those trees were still not directly our responsibility yet, but maybe we can prevail for those people that are those contractors and so forth, to get them on the stick a little bit. Is there any way to do that, Shaun?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, some of the trees do have some irrigation systems that are within, underneath the tree or in the root system. But some of the other ones, yeah, absolutely. I know I've, I've talked with SFS and KBS, both contracting architects for these facilities, just in the last week and, and we are planning to have a review of some outstanding items to include the landscaping around the facilities that, that needs to get completed, so, yes.
Yeah, our, our yard here doesn't look like what I think was, thinking it ought to look like when they were done.
Right.
So, okay. Thank you, Shaun.
Yep.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Reeves. Real quickly, you've got my report attached. I just do have one additional item to add that I want to talk about real quick and it goes right in with what Mr. Peterson was talking about with the new Wayfair signs that are coming in. Under the previous administration, it was brought up about how ugly those current standards, the posts are for those Wayfair signs. And I happened to come across a community the other day that had the same type of pole, but they took the time to, to paint those with a, a hunter forest green. And I didn't know what effort it would take on the city's part to go ahead and paint those. At least they would then have a little bit of blending into the environment. But we want to make sure we don't get the signs green, so.
I know a painter.
It would help with the aesthetic, aesthetic without having to go and replace a whole lot of.
Understand. We used the Telscar poles, basically the same what we use for stop signs, parking, all the signs we put out there. That's the same sign, poles that we use with the purpose that if they were ever to get hit, it would be quicker and simpler for us to replace. We did look at some more fancy signs initially, or poles initially. However, I mean, it'd be like the decorative poles on Oak Street, for instance. When someone hits one of those, it takes us lots of weeks to get a new one in, so. That was why we had chose to go with what we did and the fact that they were, you know, a few feet away from, you know, another sign. We didn't see them being necessary to have it painted.
But if we were to leave those same, same poles there, but just can we touch them up and, you know, take the signs off long enough to spray them green?
I can have my guys spray paint the signs if you wish, so.
Not the signs, but.
Oh, I'm sorry, the poles, yes.
But if we do that, the poles, at least they blend in with the environment, they're a little more.
I suppose if you direct us to do that, we will do what you ask, so.
Well, if you'll kind of at least give it a thought and maybe put together what you think time-wise or staff, because I doubt it'll take much dollar-wise, product-wise, but it'll take staff time. So if you can kind of give us an idea of what you believe it'd take, that'd be great. I think the council would agree if you brought that up. I think they'd probably all vote for it, so. And I'm sure there's a few citizens who would come up and also be on board with that, so. If there's nothing else, I will accept a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion that we adjourn this meeting?
Second.
We have a motion from Mr. Reeves, a second by Mr. Shannon. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anyone opposed? Point to the chair, the ayes have it. We're adjourned.